Because in friendships you can have...
One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two...
Mic check, microphone five.
Mic check, one, two, three, mic check, check, check. Can you back up Cameron, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, one, two...
With coverage you can count on, this is Channel 3 Eyewitness News at 11.
Good evening, thank you for joining us, I'm Greg Glover.
And I'm Cindy Sexton. City council members will vote yes or no next week on whether Chattanooga's acting police chief gets the job. Tonight was the first time David Roddy addressed the council since Mayor Andy Burke appointed him earlier this month.
During the meeting today, they asked him several tough questions about the police force and about his plan as chief. Channel 3's Tanisha Cordell has a closer look at what Roddy says he hopes to accomplish. Tanisha?
Well, each council member fired off questions and concerns they gathered from their constituents. One of the hot topics was community policing on the heels of the recent events in Charlottesville and around the country. Roddy says he sees this as an opportunity to build friendships with the community members rather than relationships.
Because in friendships you can have good and bad discussions. You can disagree. You could even get a little heated. But you still shake hands or hugs when you walk away because you know both of you are trying to get to the same result.
Acting Police Chief David Roddy says in his 23 years of experience, he's learned that building trust with the community is key. He says programs like Coffee with a Cop and Front Porch Lineups reflect that.
Community policing and problem-solving policing are one and the same, but we go about achieving them in two different ways.
Keeping good officers in Chattanooga was another topic. Roddy says he wants to require new hires to sign two-year contracts in efforts to get them to commit longer. He says if an officer breaks that contract, the city should be reimbursed.
They say it costs $15,000 to train a law enforcement officer. If at the end of 12 months they leave, they would then reimburse the city of Chattanooga $7,500. They prorated the $15,000 down.
Roddy also wants to find a way to get more minorities on the force. In a recent study, he says 227 minorities applied for the Chattanooga Police Academy. Only six graduated.
Of the 227 that had gone online and filled out the initial application, a very small number of that were actually getting to the physical agility test and the written test. Those are the first stages of the process.
Roddy says he's ready to face the department's challenges. Some are asking for one last thing.
Just represent that name, Roddy, to the utmost and make sure that your legacy is amazing.
City council members will vote on whether to appoint David Roddy as police chief next week. For now, live in the studio, Tanisha Cordell, Channel 3 Eyewitness News.
Thanks, Tanisha. Chattanooga police are investigating the city's latest shooting. It happened near the 2500 block of O'Rear Street. Details are limited right now. Police do confirm a person showed up at a hospital with what appeared to be gunshot wounds. The extent of those injuries is unknown at this time. Stay with Channel 3 for updates on this story.
And Chattanooga police are investigating a second shooting as well. This one on Old Hickson Pike. Details are limited right now, but they confirm a person was shot. The extent of that person's injuries are not known. Of course, we'll keep you updated on both of these stories at wrcbtv.com.
The Marion County Sheriff's Office is searching for a bank robber. Officers say this man walked into the North Jackson Bank in Kimball just after 1:00 this afternoon. They say the man threatened to hurt the teller and demanded money. The man took the money and left the building. These images were captured by the bank's security cameras. The man is described to be about 6'1" and is in his late twenties to early thirties. If you know him or have any information, you're asked to call the Marion County Sheriff's Office. President Trump is courting new controversy in the media this evening, once again blaming both sides for the deadly violence over the weekend in Charlottesville, Virginia.
While he denounced the driver who plowed into a crowd of counter protesters, he defended the white nationalists and their right to protest the removal of the statue of Confederate General Robert E. Lee. NBC's Blaine Alexander has more.
Tonight, President Trump at the center of a new firestorm for his latest comments on Saturday's deadly violence in Charlottesville, Virginia.
I think there's blame on both sides, and I have no doubt about it, and you don't have any doubt about it either.
The president seeming to return to his initial response from Saturday, sparking outrage for spreading the blame.
You had a group on one side that was bad, and you had a group on the other side that was also very violent.
The president did denounce the driver that police say plowed his car into a crowd of counter protesters.
The driver of the car is a murderer.
But the president defended a controversial gathering that sparked the weekend violence, a torchlit march on Friday night with many there claiming allegiance to the KKK, neo-Nazis, and other hate groups.
There were people protesting very quietly, the taking down of the statue of Robert E. Lee. What about the alt-left? What about the fact that they came charging, that they came charging with clubs in their hands, swinging clubs?
Chief of Staff John Kelly standing grim-faced on the sidelines as the president went off-script during a planned newser on infrastructure. Tonight, sharp criticism from members of the president's own party.
What he did today again goes back on what he said yesterday, and that's unacceptable.
At least one person praising the president's words? Former KKK leader David Duke applauding his honesty and courage. Blaine Alexander, NBC News, Washington.
A local restaurant fired an employee after he attended the rally in Charlottesville. Mojo Burrito's president posted a statement on Facebook saying they do not condone harassment, racism, or discrimination. It's unclear why the employee attended the rally. We have reached out to him for comment.
Last month, the Chattanooga chapter of the NAACP asked for the removal of this Confederate statue from the front of the Hamilton County Courthouse. The bust of General Alexander P. Stewart was erected in 1918. The NAACP said they plan to bring the issue up in front of the commission again sometime next week. In Tennessee, any statue or memorial must receive a 2/3 majority vote from the Tennessee Historical Commission to be relocated or renamed.
A construction worker was injured at a job site this afternoon. Chattanooga firefighters responded to a report of a fall victim at the Edwin Hotel on Walnut Street. Firefighters carried the victim down five flights of stairs. The worker was taken to Erlanger. No word on the patient's condition. 222 people are losing their jobs at Resolute Forest Products in Calhoun, Tennessee. The company announced the cuts come as it shuts down newsprint production operations. A spokeswoman says 491 people will continue to work at the paper and tissue mill. The spokeswoman said the decision is a part of the company's plan to be effective in the future.
The latest on the Alabama special primary election for the US Senate seat vacated by Attorney General Jeff Sessions for Republicans. Senator Luther Strange and former Alabama Chief Justice Roy Moore are headed to a runoff on September 26th. They represent different factions within the Alabama GOP. The runoff winner will face Doug Jones on December 12th. Jones won the Democratic nod outright this evening.
Time now to send it over to Paul Barris.
He's live in the Storm Alert Center for the latest on the forecast. A little bit of rain out there tonight, Paul.
We did about 40% to 50% of the area got some rain for today. It started off over Signal Mountain. The heaviest rain area in Greene moved over the north, the part of Whitfield County, and then through Murray County, all the way down into the extreme southwestern part of Gilmer County with over an inch of rain. These are estimates from the radar. And just to the north of Lafayette, there was about 8/10 of an inch of rain. And just a little bit south of Villanow, there was about a half-inch of rain. So there were some pretty good showers popping up. Now, we still have some high clouds that are moving by currently, but there's going to be some breaks in the clouds. When we get complete breaks, we could see some patchy dense fog in places where you've already seen some of that rain. Want to show you Vipercast tomorrow morning. Really not much rain out there to begin with, and into the afternoon, I still don't see that much rain coming up on Vipercast here at all. Overnight, we'll see an increase in clouds, and then by Thursday morning, could have a few showers. They shouldn't last too long. And just some widely scattered stuff coming up into Thursday, and into Thursday night and Friday morning. Again, more showers could form mainly into the higher elevation. So that's the way things are looking right now. We're also going to check out the hurricane out in the Atlantic. That's Gert's, already got an I, too. We'll tell you all about that on my seven-day forecast.
Thanks, Paul. After the break on Eyewitness News at 11, the White House is making it clear the US does not want to wage war.
If this comes after, North Korea has apparently said they're backing down on their threats against Guam. Stay with us. In Kingsport, Tennessee, 11 men were arrested following a four-day human trafficking investigation by the TBI. From July 31st through August 3rd, special agents posed to juvenile girls and posted ads on the website BackPage.com. Agents received a number of calls and text messages from men across Tennessee and other surrounding states. The 11 men face felony charges. Agents said they paid to have sex with an underage girl.
A State Department spokeswoman made it clear today the US does not want a war with North Korea. During a State Department briefing, Heather Nowitzki said the Trump administration believes diplomacy deserves a chance, but she says the US is not going to negotiate its way back to the negotiating table. She says North Korean President Kim Jong-un must show first he's serious about dismantling his nuclear missile program.
Coming up on Eyewitness News at 11, meteorologist Nick Austin spent the day electrofishing with the TWRA and the TVA.
We'll tell you how it helps monitor the waterways in the Chattanooga area after the break.
About every five years, TVA and TWRA get together to go fishing, but it's not for sport. They're electrofishing, collecting samples to determine the condition of the water and protect the animals in it.
It simply puts electricity into the water at a low amperage, stuns the fish. We're able to net those fish up, put them in some type of holding container.
The scientists identify which species they find and in what amounts. This can tell them whether or not the water is in good shape.
We look at the composition of those species in our sample, and we also look at the health of the fish, if there's increased parasites or disease.
Don't worry, the fish don't die or get hurt. It's a very mild shock for just a few seconds, kind of like the static shock you get when you touch a door handle after walking across a carpet during the wintertime. Once observed, the fish are placed back in the water. Studies determine the effects, if any, of flooding, drought, pollution, and nearby land development.
We use this information to help us to determine where to do our water quality work and to also share it with partners.
It helps pinpoint which...
A team of biologists hit the water today to check up on the fish that live in the Tennessee River Basin. The study will help them determine if the waterways in our area are healthy.
Scientists invited Channel 3 meteorologist Nick Austin along. He was happy to go along. He reports on what they found, and he tells us why it's important to all of us.
About every five years, TVA and TWRA get together to go fishing, but it's not for sport. They're electrofishing, collecting samples to determine the condition of the water and protect the animals in it.
It simply puts electricity into the water at a low amperage, stuns the fish. We're able to net those fish up, put them in some type of holding container.
The scientists identify which species they find and in what amounts. This can tell them whether or not the water is in good shape.
We look at the composition of those species in our sample, and we also look at the health of the fish, if there's increased parasites or disease.
Don't worry, the fish don't die or get hurt. It's a very mild shock for just a few seconds, kind of like the static shock you get when you touch a door handle after walking across a carpet during the wintertime. Once observed, the fish are placed back in the water. Studies determine the effects, if any, of flooding, drought, pollution, and nearby land development.
We use this information to help us to determine where to do our water quality work and to also share it with partners.
It helps pinpoint which banks need to be restored to prevent dirt and debris from entering our waters. These snapshots of information are important because streams flow into reservoirs.
The reservoirs not only provide things like drinking water and clean water for our use, but the recreational impact is huge.
Both agencies say these studies help them learn more than water samples alone. Henneker says the goal is to stay ahead of the game.
We always want to fix the problem before we lose the species.
That was Nick Austin reporting. More than 500 sites are studied along the Tennessee River Basin. At first glance, we're told the North Chickamauga Creek near Lower Mill Road where they were today looks good. It's important to note, it is illegal in the state of Tennessee to electrofish for recreation.
The total solar eclipse is less than a week away, and some schools are closing for next week's historic event, but students in Dalton will have a longer school day to witness the event together. Cleveland business owner Alan Jones donated 9,000 safety glasses to protect students who are learning why it's important to wear them. In Dalton, 99.1% of the sun will be covered by the moon. School officials say learning how to wear the safety glasses and keep them on is a top priority.
Oh, absolutely. You need to make sure that they know how to put them on. It will depend on the students and the grade level. Each individual teacher will be looking at the needs of their child. Do I need to place them on their faces? Can they place them on themselves? And then I check. So we're drilled down to the details at the classroom level.
School officials are planning activities and practice drills each day for students and teachers to get ready. If you have questions or concerns about the glasses your school is using or plans in place, you are encouraged to call your child's school before the big day.
And if you haven't yet picked up your solar eclipse glasses, good luck. Many places around town have sold out. There are still a few ways you can get your pair, though Chattanooga's Public Library System will hand out 100 pairs of glasses at each of its four locations on Friday starting at 9:00 AM. Goodwill will give away 200 pairs of glasses at each of its Chattanooga, Cleveland, Dayton, and Athens locations the day of the eclipse. You can also get glasses on websites like Amazon. Just make sure they are a certified brand. For a way to verify that, check out the story of the WRCP app. You can click on the solar eclipse section.
Now we check in with Paul Barris. We're still too far away from Monday to actually closely predict the forecast.
Especially narrow it down to that few minutes, huh, Paul?
That's correct. There is no way we can predict that right now. It's a little too far out. We can just give you a general outlook for the day. As far as the bus stop forecast goes, that's a different kettle of fish there. What we've got right now is we're going to see some clouds in the morning, and you'll see temperatures at around 75. It's going to be very, very warm and humid, and quite humid into the afternoon with 89, partly cloudy to mostly cloudy skies. A very small chance for a shower coming up tomorrow. The radar's showing all the rain from Atlanta on south, but really not that much. It's fading out. Bigger thunderstorms out into the Great Plains and out over parts of Nebraska. Severe weather breaking out, severe thunderstorm watch out there, and numerous severe thunderstorm warnings going on. Looking at the satellite photo, we have some high clouds and middle clouds here, but they're going to break apart, then we'll get some fog. What it's looking like now, see right in here? That is the center of Gert, and that is an I in the hurricane. And it is a hurricane round, it's a category-one hurricane. Winds 85 miles an hour, it's going to get winds to near 100 probably within a day or so. But it's going to be way out to sea, and it won't be affecting any landmass at all. So it's just something to watch. 76, the best kite per hurricane, the ones that are out to sea. 76 in City, 75 Cleveland, Dayton, 73 Athens, 74 Dalton, 68 already in Murphy. Winds are lightening out of the southeast, so not a problem there as far as the temperatures go. Heat index right now, same as the temperature, so it's not a big deal. 91, 74, the high and the low. Very, very warm today, just a trace of rain at the airport. And sky watchers told me 8/10 in Varnell, 6/10 in Chatsworth, while Ford Mountain had about 2/10, L.J. had about 2/10. Scottsboro, about a tenth of an inch of rain. Dalton hit 90 today. 3/10 Red Bank, 2/3/10 in Trenton, and 92 up into Cleveland, 93 Sadi Daisy. Udelwa had about a half-inch of rain today. And then you get towards Spring City and Ten Mile, 91. Dayton was 90. 92 in Pikeville, a tenth of an inch out near Murphy, and also on the corners, Jasper had about a tenth of an inch of rain. Looking at Vipercast tomorrow morning, not that much out there at all, although a little frontal system still stalled. By afternoon, some isolated, widely scattered showers popping up, sort of like today, but I think less of a chance for tomorrow. And then 7:00 in the morning, better chance into the afternoon and evening for some showers. A cold front gets closer, but the front's going to sweep in, probably at a bad time to create any rain. And it looks like by Friday, we're going to be drying off, and we're going to stay dry probably into Saturday and probably into Sunday, too. We're thinking in the next four days, though, another quarter to a half-inch of rain is possible in scattered areas, so not everyone's going to see that rain. Tonight, 74, a little bit of patchy fog in places where you have seen some rain. 90 tomorrow with a shower possible, but a warm, humid day again. Heat index probably be about 95, 96 in places. Tomorrow night, 75 with partly cloudy skies. And the Channel 3 Storm Alert seven-day forecast looks warm and humid right into next week, too. We're looking at a 30% chance through Friday. The weekend, dry, but pretty warm, near 90, that's seasonable. Now on Monday, eclipse Monday highs near 90, and we'll probably see some showers. They'll be scattered into the latter part of the day, probably after the eclipse, but you can't rule out completely. Very humid again, the same thing into Tuesday. Lot of 90s there. That's about seasonable, too.
Thanks. In sports, up next, the game of the winner winner is announced.
Game of the week, I bet?
Is that what I suppose you said?
Winner winner chicken dinner? Is that what they're trying to mix those two?
I didn't know what Paul Shaheen was doing with that, but yes, the game of the week winner is announced after a record vote.
Lots of folks going online for that. Plus, Channel 3 is inside the brand-new Mercedes-Benz Stadium today. We'll bring you a sneak peek ahead in sports.
Channel 3's total eclipse coverage is brought to you by Green Forbes. Call today to Go Solar at your home or business.
Talk about starting with a bang. Our first Friday night football game of the week vote of the year was our biggest ever. Yes, ever. More than 16,000 votes, and the margin of victory was less than 900 votes. Your winner, it's the big one. About 50, 60 miles north, up 75, Big Mid Central at McMinn County. It will be our game of the week. They were closing in on 9,000 total votes. That means we will have a live crew at the game starting at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, and they'll be there through the 11:00 p.m. show. But if you can't wait until Friday, the action starts Thursday. Two games at Finley Stadium. Notre Dame and Baylor start the season off at 6:30. Central plays Walker Valley in the nightcap at 8:30, again, at Finley Stadium. Both of those games on Thursday night. The next step to full-blown football season would be college ball, and the Mocs get that started a week before most everyone else. Kickoff is in 11 days. Game week officially starts on Sunday, but head coach Tom Arth is treating this week as a practice game week.
We want our players to get used to what a game week is going to feel like in terms of the information that's presented to them, when it's presented to them, how it's presented to them, the types of things we're doing at practice. You know, be very similar to a Tuesday during the season. So, you know, we want to really prepare our players for everything, make sure that, you know, they're getting a chance to do it before, you know, before it starts for real.
Again, it's next Saturday, August 26th, with Jacksonville State in Montgomery on ESPN. I hesitate to use the word kryptonite, but if Alabama has a kryptonite, it's quarterbacks that resemble Deshaun Watson. He's gone, but there's other dual-threat guys, like this next-level guy at Florida State, that being Deandre Francois. Bama defensive back Minka Fitzpatrick says Francois's play is as smooth as his name.
Francois is a great leader, real tough guy. He can take a hit. You know, he took a lot of big hits last year, got up, kept moving to make plays. He's a real athletic guy. He can escape the pocket, make plays with his feet and with his arm. And I feel like that's the type of offense they are, just a big-play offense. They rely on the other team making mistakes or just beating you over the top.
Minka is now the veteran in Alabama's secondary, and the Alabama staff says they trust Minka to play all six positions if needed in the defensive backfield. Problem is, he can't play all six at once, but after Alabama's first preseason scrimmage, Minka says the younger defensive backs are coming along just fine.
Yeah, younger guys and a couple of guys who haven't really played a whole lot, but are a little bit older. And, you know, we all been working to build them up, lift them up, and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing on and off the field. And, you know, all those guys, they all do what they're supposed to do. They execute when they're supposed to execute. I mean, you're going to mess up a little bit when you haven't played a lot. I messed up a couple of times in the scrimmage as well, so, you know, you've got to build on each other and just keep working, and we're going to be where we need to be.
So again, Alabama will have the honors of playing the first meaningful football game inside of Atlanta's brand-new Mercedes-Benz Stadium, that being September 2nd with, aforementioned, Florida State. But we got a sneak peek inside that stadium today. Jill Jelnik was there. She says it is spectacular. Few fun facts as you take in the views. That halo video board that you're looking at up top, it's more than five stories tall. Goes around the whole top of the stadium. The Georgia Dome, remember that old thing, had just 30 beer taps. This stadium has more than 1,200. I tweeted it earlier, guys, not one of those 1,200 are allowed for Patriot fans. We'll have more of an in-depth look at that stadium soon enough. On the diamond tonight, the Atlanta Braves are still in progress at Colorado. Atlanta leading it 4-3 in the eighth inning. They need a win, if nothing else, for morale. They've lost six of seven of those Braves.
For morale, the players and the fans, huh?
Yeah. And David Carroll.
David Carroll, too.
Specifically.
Paul Barris has your seven-day forecast when we get back.
All right, our plan for tomorrow looks pretty much like it was for today. Temperature's pretty warm, approaching 90 degrees. Chance for rain slim, though, a little slimmer than it was for today. We had about a 40 percent chance today. I think only a 20 percent chance for tomorrow. And Thursday, about a 30 percent chance, same thing on Friday. The weekend looks dry, and next week, some widely scattered showers again. Highs near 90 for the next seven days on average.
Paul, thank you.
The King has returned to the building, just like he never left.
It was a blast from the past this morning for residents. At the East Ridge Life Center, they jammed to "The King of Rock and Roll."
That's "Love Me Tender," just a little bit of it. Pastor Rich Huff on the River of Life in Lafayette, Georgia teamed up with the Ring Old Wedding Chapel to honor Elvis. Today's tribute comes at the Poplar Chapel, along with thousands around the world remember the 40th anniversary of Elvis's death. Elvis Week wraps up Saturday. Candlelight vigil going on as we speak at Graceland in Memphis right now.
That's right. The pastor sounded good.
He did. He's got the...
What do you mean, pastor? I thought it was...
Pastor Elvis Presley.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll do for Eyewitness News at 11:00. Are you going to say it? Thank you very much.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Greg. That was good.